Meeting planning session.
Nobody can hear, but we can hear now.
Okay.
Planning session for November the tenth, twenty twenty at nine A M. I think you all have an outline. And for those of you that's in the council chambers, there is outlines there as well. We will follow the agenda as printed. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Alexander. Counselor Collier.
Present.
Counselor Marshall.
Present.
Counselor Matthews. Counselor Matthews. Counselor Thickepin.
Present.
Counselor Crusoe. Counselor Crusoe.
She's on there. I think they're muted.
Oh.
But they're on there.
Uh. Mister Singleton, can you unmute them? Okay, um, can I, um, Counsel President, can I just call, roll again?
Yes ma'am, go ahead and call again.
Okay. Counselor Alexander. Counselor Collier.
Present.
Counselor Marshall.
Present.
Counselor Matthews. Counselor Thickepin.
Present.
Counselor Crusoe. Counselor Donald.
Present.
You have four present, three absent, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. Um. On today, we've had, we had so much going on this, this week, these past two and or three weeks here in the city of Bessemer and around the country. We would ask that you would, uh, you would pray for not only the city of Bessemer, but for this country as a whole. Pray that we would do things decently and in order as we go to the master in prayer. May we have a silent word of prayer, please. Amen. Item number four in the planning session, Ms. Taylor.
Status on T V A.
I would give that to the attorneys, Attorney Peyton and Attorney Harris. Attorney Harris, are you on the line?
I'm on the line.
Attorney Harris, uh Peyton, I can see you.
Yes ma'am.
May we have a status, please?
Yes ma'am, um, the latest on the T V A is that, uh, last Tuesday, um, Mister Yarborough and I had a Zoom meeting with T V A. And the question that was asked of us, um, was to find out whether T V A would be willing to sell the substation on the north end of town to the city of Bessemer, and if so, at what price? And would T V A be willing to sell the transmission line that leads to the airport, and if so, at what price? Uh, Mister Yarborough had written a letter to, uh, T V A making that request. And as I said, we had that, uh, conversation with them last Tuesday. Um, there were approximately five representatives of T V A on the call, including, uh, someone from their general counsel's office to discuss the matter. What they told us is that the Bessemer line is a hundred and fifteen K V and that they had no precedent for selling a substation or a lot transmission line to anyone with a transmission line above one hundred K V. In order for them to sell the line to, uh, local providers such as Bessemer, that they would have to have T V A board approval. And that at this time, they thought it would be in our best interest to, uh, act as if they would not be willing to sell the substation to us and the transmission line, meaning that the city of Bessemer would have to, um, construct a new substation and. So with that, I contacted, uh, Southern Company because they would be the ones that would be performing the system impact study to determine whether in fact, Southern Services could provide service to Bessemer. And of course, if T V A was willing to sell the substation to us, they had a main transmission line that ran into that substation and that would have made it a lot easier. But since that isn't the case, um, and that we would not even have had to have performed a system impact study if they had been willing to sell it to us. But since they were not willing to do that, uh, where we are now is that, um, in order to proceed to determine the feasibility of purchasing power from another provider, uh, we will need to have a system impact study prepared and, and, and turn it into Southern Company. Now, what does that mean and what does that cost? There is a ten thousand dollar application fee that must be paid to, um, Southern Company. And then we have to prepare, we have to post a deposit for one month of service with Southern Company. And that is a FERC rule, that is not a Southern Company rule. When I say FERC, that's the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They're the ones that require that. Interest is paid on that sum and that amount is approximately two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Now, as we sit here right now, I just received an email in the last two minutes from Southern Company with a lot, large portion of that application completed for us to move forward. But I, as I said, I just received it in the last two minutes, so I have not had the opportunity to, uh, review that. But again, I think it's a ten thousand dollar application fee plus two, approximately three hundred thousand dollars deposit fee to move forward with that. Uh, as I recall, the council has authorized the, um, mayor to move forward with having that system impact study performed. And that is the, that is my update today as we sit here.
Counselors, you've heard the update from Attorney Peyton. Are there any questions and or concern, Attorney Harris? Are there any questions?
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, sir.
Attorney Peyton.
Yes.
Uh, I do remember the council, um, passing something and authorizing the mayor to do what he needed to do. Did that include that ten thousand dollar deposit and the other money that we talked about?
My understanding it, it was. I'll revisit that, but my understanding it was.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On my paperwork as well, Attorney Peyton, I have, um, that the council did approve it here on my paperwork to be done so that we can, uh, move forward with what we have to do with T V A. Uh, Ms. Taylor, are there any more counselors that has come on the line?
I see Ms. Crusoe, but she, Counselor Crusoe.
Counselor Alexander, Counselor Alexander is present.
Okay, Counselor Alexander arrived at the meeting at nine eleven A M. I see Counselor Crusoe as well, but she's not answering.
She may be.
Okay, it says, um, the host is unmuted. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. All right. Counselor Crusoe arrived at the meeting at nine eleven A M. as well.
Thank you, uh, good morning, um, Counselor Crusoe, Counselor Alexander.
Good morning.
Are there any questions concerning the T V A status or did you all hear the status of the T V A?
Madam Chair, I heard part of it, um, I ca- I think I came in on the end part, um, of the discussion.
Yeah, I didn't hear it either.
Madam Chair, would you, would you like me to go back over that?
Uh, yes, sir, go ahead and, um, is Counselor Matthew on the line? Matthews on the line? Okay, yes, yes, sir, if you don't mind, please.
So just to reiterate, uh, uh, Mister Yarborough and I had sent, had, uh, Mister Yarborough had sent a letter to T V A with two questions. One, would T V A be willing to sell to the, uh, city of Bessemer the, um, Valley Creek Substation and the transmission line that runs to the airport? Um, we had a conference call with T V A. There were approximately, I think there were five members from T V A, including a member of their general counsel's office online. Uh, they stated that since the, um, network was over a hundred K V line, that they would take board approval of the T V A to answer those questions and that we needed to, for this period, assume that T V A would not sell the sub, either the substation or the transmission line to the city of Bessemer. And that we would need to, uh, act as if we would have to construct a new substation and transmission line. They did state that if in fact the city of Bessemer in the future determined that it was in Bessemer's best interest to move forward with purchasing power from another provider, that they would look at the matter. But they would be looking at it from what was the best, in the best interest of T V A and other T V A customers. Um, what that means is that we need to go ahead and complete the application for the, um, system impact study and will need to pay the ten thousand dollar fee to Southern Company to perform that study and we will need to pay the deposit in the amount of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. As I stated, um, as I sit here right now, uh, after the council meeting started, I received a, um, an email from Southern Company with the application partially completed for us to move forward with that. And, uh, that's where we are. That is the status.
Counselors, do you have any concerns and or questions at this point in time?
Um, no, Madam Chair, I think, uh, my question was answered, uh, Counselor Marshall asked about the ten thousand dollar deposit.
Not only did we approve the ten thousand dollar deposit, we did approve the, um, first month, which was two ninety-eight. Is that correct, um, Attorney Harris? Attorney Harris, I'm sorry, Attorney Peyton?
Yes, ma'am, uh, that's my understanding. And I'll have to get the final number. It's, it is right at two ninety-eight, three hundred thousand, somewhere in there, and that deposit will earn interest at a federal interest rate, uh, that is set by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
Thank you so much for that update. We look forward to an update, um, in December. Item number five, Ms. Taylor.
Status on small sales.
I think that was placed in the attorney's hands as well uh, to get in touch with Mister Blankenship. We did receive, we did receive an ordinance uh, on a small sale from Mister Blankenship on last week. Um, not an ordinance, I'm sorry, from Attorney Peyton on yesterday. But we did receive paperwork from Mister Blankenship on, um, on last week. Seeing that we have just, is, um, the chair online. Counselor Matthews, seeing that we have just received this paperwork for small sales and we have not had an opportunity to look at it and or uh, get with Attorney Peyton and or Attorney Harris and or Mister Blankenship. We will, um, table this item until the next planning session in December. But we do have paperwork that will be sent to each counselor this afternoon as well. I don't, um, Attorney Peyton, did you get the paperwork from Mister Blankenship?
No, ma'am, I talked to Mister Harris. I did not know he had sent an, uh, anything to the council until this morning when I talked with Mister Harris and he said the council had received a, a presentation or a proposal from Mister Blankenship, but I, I did not receive a copy of that.
You did not receive a copy. We'll table this until the, uh, planning session in December that'll give us time to look at it and to compare to what we got on yesterday from your office. Thank you so much. Item number six, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, uh. Ms. Taylor, will you kindly announce, um, Mister Matthews, please?
Yes, Counselor Matthew arrived at the planning session at nine eighteen A M.
Counselor Matthews.
Yes, ma'am, and, uh, being that you just made, I did hear that, that part of the, I guess the, about the small sale.
Yes, sir.
And I think need to be inserted that the committee will, uh, review this and bring it back to the, uh, to the council. There is a committee on that.
Yes, sir, the committee will review and bring their recommendation back to the council.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I am on that committee and I have not received any paperwork, so, you know, I would ask respectfully that we get that information bef- you know. I don't know if any other council members got it, but I did not receive it and I would like to go over it before the sales meeting.
No, ma'am, you did not.
I have.
No, ma'am, you did not receive it. The information, the ordinance proposed ordinance that we received from Attorney Peyton on yesterday and the, um, paperwork that we received from Mister Blankenship will be sent to you all directly after this meeting. That way you all can meet and get back with the council on the second pla- on the first planning session in December, if that's okay with the committee.
That's fine.
Yes, ma'am. I just misunderstood. You said the council members received it last week and I did not, so.
No, I, I always, I always speak of the council as we. But, um, I do apologize. I received it on last week from Attorney Blank, um, Mister Blankenship. And I received it this morning, uh, that was sent to Mister Harris from Attorney Peyton. And you all will get it and just, um, shortly after the meeting. I will forward it to the secretary who will forward it to you. We'll look forward to that meet, um, that recommendation in December. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven, status on economic development incentive guidelines.
I think that was one that was sent to the attorneys as well. Do we have an update on, on those guidelines, Attorney Harris and Attorney Peyton?
Madam President, this is Dan again, um.
Yes, sir.
Just, uh, what, uh, I, I, you should have in your package incentive agreements, a two-page document. Um, everyone should have that in their package. Under the planning session section is where I found it in mine.
Thank you so much. I have it. Uh, does every counselor have that two-page incentive?
No, ma'am, I do not. This is Thickepin.
I do. This can't believe it. This is Counselor Alexander.
I got it. Counselor Collier got it.
Okay, Counselor Collier.
This is Marshall. I have it.
Counselor Matthews, did you?
Well, we're just, I see it now. I see it now. I did.
Where was it, um, where was it in your packet? Counselor Crusoe, because I didn't see it in mine.
Uh, it's behind the agenda for the planning session in my packet.
Counselor Thickepin, do you have it? In your packet?
Council meeting packet to see if it's stuck in there.
Okay.
You're talking about the incentive agreement with the.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, I.
Okay.
Mine is in my, my packet. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, this, um, Madam President, would you like me to proceed then?
Please.
All right, so in trying to determine incentive guidelines, what I did was I went back and to two thousand and six. And I looked at every incentive that I had in front of me, that I had, uh, to look at that had been granted either by the city of Bessemer or by the inter- by the industrial development board um, to try to show the council in different situations what the council or the I D B had granted in the way of, of property tax abatements or by the council with what we would call a seven seventy-two agreement, which would be a rebate on sales and use tax or lodging tax. So if you look at the very first spec- section, um, we have the distribution section and there are three there. You have the Dollar General, that was the first one that was done in two thousand and eleven. You have Amazon that was done in two thousand and eighteen. And then you have one that was done for Lowe's by the I D B on October twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty. Um, the maximum abatement period has been extended by the legislature to twenty years, but in no instance has the city of Bessemer gone more than ten years on any averon tax abatement. In addition, uh, there are typically when an averon tax abatement is granted, a construction and construction, sales and use transaction taxes are also or can be abated. And so in each of these instances, those were abated. I mean, when a project is constructed, the building materials, anything that would be subject to a sales tax are exempted from sales tax. And that is a cost to the city of Bessemer. So if you look at that, the Dollar General had six hundred and fifty employees. The least amount of employees was the Lowe's distribution center of a hundred and fifty. I put it, the amount of the investment in there, the number of employees, the payroll that would come to the city of Bessemer, because you need to think that, uh, the city of Bessemer receives occupational tax on these, whether we abate property taxes or not. In two instances, the Dollar General and the Amazon did the city grant, uh, a portion or of occupational tax rebate. The Dollar General was five hundred and fifty thousand dollar total. And, and their, their, um, averon tax, if you look at fourteen point six million, that was when they, when they started out eleven years ago or ten years ago. Um, that'd be about a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars a year. So in each instance, forty-one million would be forty-one thousand. And then Lowe's would be fifty-eight thousand. That would be the amount of occupational tax that would be received. Uh, in this instance, the, the mayor recommended that Lowe's not receive more than a five-year tax abatement due to the number of employees being a hundred and fifty and I D B uh, went along with that and granted a five-year abatement there. So that's, that's distribution. So you can see that what's been granted is, uh, between five to ten years. Now, Amazon built, is building a second facility on Lakeshore Parkway and that has just been announced. They are not asking for any abatements at all on that project.
Right, whoa, 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 if you don't mind, repeat the one you said that the I D B went along with.
Sure, this is the Lowe's, the third one, the one on October twenty-seventh. It was the.
October.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. It was sixty-one million dollar investment. It's a hu- one point two million square feet facility. Um, and that was, uh, the I D B granted a five-year tax abatement on that item. Um, Amazon is building a second facility on Lakeshore Parkway. They did not request any incentives there. There was another one that the council considered. It was, remember the FedEx facility that is in Birmingham and Bessemer? And with, the council, uh, entered into an M O U with Birmingham on that one. Um, but in that instance, what the council did was consent to a sales and use transaction tax only to allow the county to do that. The city did not grant a property tax abatement due to the fact that I think the only investment in the city of Bessemer was five million dollars. And the cost of providing services would be so great that the city council did not determine that a, a property tax abatement would have been in order. So you can kind of see there, that's kind of the range of five to ten year abatement that, uh, to give you guidance in the future on what would happen there. On retail, which is the second sector, there have been a number of those, um, there were three car ones on there. Uh, you see Dixie Nissan. It looks like they were given a five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar grant to purchase land. The land cost was one point four million. And that was a rebate of sales and use taxes to, no, that was not a rebate in sales and use. That was a grant, an outright grant, I think it was. I wasn't in, involved in that one in oh-six, but it looks like it was five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Premier Chevrolet was the next one. That was a two point four, three, four million dollar one. That was also done in oh-six out at exit one oh eight. And in those instances, what happened there with that one was, remember Premier moved from, um, up on Ninth Avenue, Bessemer Super Highway out to exit one oh eight. They were an existing business. So the city council at that time granted them what is called a, a seventy percent rebate of sales and use tax. But it had to be above, only on the sales and use tax that was above the threshold that they had at the old location, which was two hundred and sixty-two thousand. So they had to, they had to drive sales tax more than what they had at the other one to be entitled to that one. And that one is still ongoing and that period goes to two thousand and thirty-two. That's a twenty-year rebate, a rebate.
Um, okay, excuse me, um, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mister, um, excuse me, Attorney Peyton. Okay, we went into disagreement with Premier according to this paperwork. He said in oh-six, we, we haven't, and, I mean, so the abatements that we are allowing for distribution be, um, is different for what we're allowing for retail?
Yes, ma'am, they're, they're totally different animals. Uh, distribution under state law, you're allowed to give a property tax, an averon property tax abatement for non-educational property taxes. You are not allowed to grant a tax abatement for retail. That's only for industrial type properties. So the only way that you can grant a rebate or an incentive to a retail facility is to, uh, enter into what is called a section seven seventy-two amendment, which is, it's, it's a section in the constitution that allows municipalities to grant aid for economic projects. And so what happens, that's what happens under the retail section with the cars.
Okay, well, as for Dixie, Dixie Nissan, I don't see an, an abatement period, um, um, in there. What, do we not have a period or?
Yes, ma'am. If you look where it says Dixie Nissan next to it, just to give you, it, what it says, five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar grant to purchase land, which costs one point four million dollars. So the city entered into an agreement whereby the city paid five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of the land cost, of which it was one point four million dollars. That was the incentive granted to Dixie Nissan to move from Bessemer Super Highway down to exit one oh X.
Okay, so that was the only incentive for this Dixie Nissan. We don't have any other abatement going on with Dixie Nissan over a period of time. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, um, for Premier Chevrolet, um, from, it, it was established in two thousand and six and it's granted through twenty. Okay, um, for Premier Chevrolet, um, from it it was established in two thousand six and it's granted through twenty thirty-two. How many years, um? Does that entail?
Well, I've done the math, what is that, twenty twenty-six years? Is that right?
Okay, that's what I was asking as far as, um, with with the abatement period, you so, um, we're going beyond the twenty years or the ten years, um, for the sake of retail?
Well, yes, ma'am. What happens, remember, is tax abatements, uh, abhorrent tax abatements at that time would are only until recently could you go to twenty years on a tax abatement, but typically that's extraordinary. And I have seen very few cities, if any, grant a twenty-year property tax abatement. Amazon, when they built the big fulfillment center, asked for twenty-year tax abatement, but the city was not inclined to grant that. So retail, these retail is not subject to that statutory limitation. They're subject to the constitutional provision that says that you're just allowed to grant economic incentives that are in the public's interest. You have to find a public purpose, uh, new job creation, uh, you know, the the new employment, uh, those those things that and that's what you would use to grant incentives to retail.
Okay, and so the same, um, reason that you gave for Dixie on Nissan, would that be the same for Jordan Frazier, the reason we don't have an abatement period on here?
Yes, ma'am. The the city, and I I believe that was through the Commercial Development Authority. And
Yes.
I I believe what happened was the city issued a check to the Commercial Development Authority for two million dollars. And then the Commercial Development Authority wrote a check to Jordan Frazier for two million dollars to establish a used car facility.
Yes, sir.
What ended up happening on that one was that shortly thereafter, Jordan Frazier, uh, that money was, it looks to me, was paid over to Chrysler. And then Jordan Frazier, uh, car dealership filed bankruptcy. So I know, you know, I'm just letting you know, again, I wasn't involved in that transaction.
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. And I think that, and and I don't know if the two million dollars was to build the dealership or to buy additional land or or a combination of both on that one. Uh, the next retail rebate was to Simmons Sporting Goods when they did the large addition to Simmons there. Um, on Second Avenue. Uh, that was a one point five million dollar investment renovation. They had an existing annual, uh, sales tax average of a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So their threshold, they had to bring in more than a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to be able to collect anything on that. And again, that was a seventy percent of sales tax above the threshold. And that agreement ended on in December of nineteen.
Okay, so at this point, given that their, um, abatement period ended in in December, um, we we're beyond abatement on period time with them and the city should be um, benefiting from their businesses here in the city at this point. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am. We would be collecting one hundred percent of the four cent sales tax on all items that are are collected, uh, at Simmons Sporting Goods.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh, HWF is Huntsville Huntsville Wholesale Furniture. Uh, this is the entity that owns uh, approximately, they own a a warehouse, industrial warehouse or distribution warehouse in the city of Bessemer. They have eight or nine locations across the state of Alabama. They are able to, uh, by agreement, when you go into one of their stores, you, when you purchase an item, all those items that come from the distribution warehouse, Bessemer is allowed to put on that bill of lading or that bill of sale that Bessemer sales tax will be charged on that. And so we rebate fifty percent of the sales tax to them that is collected. They they, I think they have, they have the one store in Bessemer now out, uh, at Promenade. But all of their other stores are located in other municipalities, and the city of Bessemer actually collects sales tax from the sales on other stores. If the personal property that is sold is comes from the Bessemer warehouse.
And what's the name of this, uh, what what is it HWF saying for again?
Wholesale Furniture. It's actually furniture company. These are actually furniture stores, as you see. Um, then, and that was one point eight million. The next one is Town and Country Ford. That was in two thousand seventeen. That was a three point four six seven million dollar, uh, investment in their property to bring that up to the latest Ford Motor Company standards and to put in a quick line. If you look there, they have a threshold of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That was a five-year average of their sales tax prior to that date. And so their threshold is three eighty-five. In years one through three of the agreement, they receive a hundred percent above the threshold. And then, um, in years four through two thousand thirty-eight, they receive a seventy percent above the threshold. And that is similar, very similar to the Premier Chevrolet, um, one. The Fourth Avenue Supermarket, that was, uh, related to the the store on Nineteenth Street that was the food giant, that was a seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollar uh, investment to upgrade that store. Again, you see there's a threshold. So you see that common denominator on retail investment is that if they have an existing store there that produces sales tax, you would you would grab the existing sales tax revenue that they have, and they would only benefit from any additional sales due to the additional investment that they make. And that one is fifty percent above the threshold, and that goes through two thousand twenty-eight. That was a ten-year agreement. And of course, you see the Jacks, uh, those were two new stores. Uh, they did not ask for rent, uh, sales tax rebates on the store on Eighteenth Street. Remember, they ended up tearing that one down and rebuilding, but there are no rebates on that one. They built two new stores there. And and they asked for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which basically equated to the price of the land. Uh, each one of those lots were approximately three three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, the one there on Bessemer Super Highway. And then the other one was there on Morgan Road, uh, that's the Jacks location. And that's a fifty percent of sales tax rebated. However, we take out of that fifty percent, the one-eighth of a percent that goes to the rec center. We reduce that so they don't get a a rebate of the full fifty percent of the four percent. They get a rebate of fifty percent of on three point eight seven five cent.
And what amount is the, um, goes on to the Rick Center?
It's, uh, point zero one two five of, uh, sales tax.
Okay.
Um, Takala is there on Academy Drive. That is, uh, that is the new, uh, Taco Bell that's being built down on Academy Drive. Very similar to the Jacks transaction, four hundred thousand, three seventy-five, fifty percent of sales tax for ten years. Uh, Thornton Enterprises is the McDonald's on Ninth Avenue. They did a, uh, upgraded to their store. Uh, and that was the, when I call it an investment, of course, Jacks and Takala and Thornton all all spent more than seven fifty and four hundred and four hundred. They were they were in the millions, but that that is the amount of the rebate. There's a seven fifty, four hundred and a four hundred. And again, fifty percent, and those are for ten years. So those gives you, that gives you an idea on a fast food restaurant, if a new one came to town or somebody wanted rehab, you would have a guideline of what you've done in the past. Um, the next series is manufacturing. Um, and I pulled some of these. We had US Pipe when they redid the facility, fifty-eight million. That was a hundred employees, uh, payroll, five million dollars. That was a a ten-year, uh, abatement. And these are manufacturing and distribution fall within the state statute that allows for noneducational property tax abatement. So that's what those are. The retail again is the seven seventy-two amendment, uh, rebate. Manufacturing is an abatement of abhorrent property taxes. And you can kind of look down there and see, uh, there's several on there. And what what's gone on.
Okay, with US Pipe being beyond the, um, abatement period, what what percentage, um, of, um, of taxes that that's received, um, to the city from them?
Right, the city would receive a hundred percent. I just put these on there so that you would have a a historical idea of what had been granted in the past. And I started with oh seven, Milo, same thing. That one, that that, uh, abatement would be gone. Precision grinding would be gone this year. Um, and on down.
Yes, sir.
The latest one, I'll skip to the last one, we Carvana, you know, that was the one y'all did this year, ten-year abatement. Um, tourism, uh, Splash Adventure. Uh, went to the Industrial Development Board. They did a ten point nine investment in, um, new rides out at that park in two thousand eighteen. And one of the items that is abatable under the, uh, state statutes, property tax abatements is 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 tourism enterprises. So that one fell within that, and that was a three-year abatement. Um, hotels, you recently granted one to, uh, Sohan Group, that is a New Hampton Inn. If you look there, the investment is ten point six seven, approximately eleven million dollars in a hotel, the ninety-four room hotel. And that is a rebate percentage of fifty percent up to nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The way you determine that, or we looked at that one was what is the amount of sales tax that would be produced over a ten-year period? And then we did a fifty percent abatement on that, and that is a ten-year rebate appear, uh, period. Uh, I put the last one on there, a brown cell. Uh, you are allowed to grant property tax abatements for a brown cell, uh, incentive. This was consolidated pipe, uh, when they bought the, uh, facility down on Fourth Avenue. Um, Baum and Coatings, they bought that's old Baum and Coating sign, and they they did that one. So I put that one on there. So my goal here was so that you would have this, so that if anybody came to you for an incentive in the future, you would be able to use this as a guideline to determine what, if anything, you thought would be a good tax abatement, fair tax abatement to grant entity.
Counselors, you've heard Attorney Peyton. Are there any more questions and or concerns on the incentive agreement?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Attorney Peyton, thank you for all of the, uh, the work in preparing this. Um, and and I think the key to it is guidelines. Because, you know, there's just no way we can treat or or should even try to attempt to treat everybody the same. Because the dynamics are gonna be different from one company to the other, e- e- even if they all in retail or manufacturing. The dynamics are gonna be different. That that would help us determine whether we want to do a ten-year abatement or we want to do a five-year abatement. How many employees, you know, what the end, uh, uh, tax amount of money is gonna come to the city. Um, so I think saying guidelines is the appropriate, because I think it's, um, it's a situation where we have to always been in the posture of negotiating. You know, what ends up being in the best interest of the city. And as a matter of fact, I've worked towards what's mutually beneficial, um, to to the company that's trying to come and and to the city. So I think guidelines is the key, rather than thinking that we have to lock ourselves in the end of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Marshall. Thank you, Attorney Peyton, for those guidelines. Item number eight, Ms. Taylor.
Status on CDBG update.
Counselors, I get I received that on late, uh, last afternoon. I will get that update to you all, and we will, um, table that until December planning session, if that's okay with this body. Item number nine, Ms. Taylor.
Status on demolition list.
Mayor Gully, are you on the line? I see him, but I don't hear him. Okay, Mayor Gully.
President.
Yes, sir.
On the line, um, uh, yes, um, I have, uh, Mr. Tom Harmon here. Uh, he should have, uh, I think he, did you send them some information and stuff on the demolition, Tom?
Uh, they don't have it yet.
Okay. Okay, that'll be fine, uh. Mr. Harmon did pull together a list of, uh, he can, he can make sure that he gets, uh, everyone that list. Um, and, uh, and and I guess if there's any questions and so, uh, after that particular time, then, uh, we'll be more than happy to, um, to entertain those questions. But we do have a list of it has not been distributed and so to the council as of yet. We can do that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We look forward to that list after the meeting. I think I heard Mr. Harmon state that we'll get it after the meeting.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before you leave that.
Counselor Matthews.
Yeah, before you leave that, before you leave that item, I'd like to get inject some some comments. Um, I think a couple of weeks ago, we heard about a, uh, lady in the Birmingham area that had, uh, that had been found not too far from her home, an abandoned house. And and what brings my attention to these ho- these houses or structures that the doors, uh, are wide open. Uh, and I've always stated, it's not a council person's, uh, job to go around and and, uh, I guess survey their neighborhood or whatever, but we do it because we 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 like it and we we do it anyway. But it's some homes that's in my district that, uh, one in particular, well, a couple of them, that you can just walk straight through them. And I think at some point, some type of, uh, enforcement need to be done on boarding up these houses that you could just walk in. I mean, winter time is approaching and, you know, it's, uh, fires could be set. And whoever owned these homes need to be accountable and have them boarded up, whether it's windows or doors. And they shouldn't just be wide open. So, uh, there are some in in District Six that's like that. So, uh, you know, just to continue to, there's ISO to the community as well. So, uh, something needs to be done about these structures, whether they, uh, on the list to be, uh, demolished or not. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I mean, I just want to kind of touch on that a little, um, a- as well. I completely, um, but, um, thank you, Mayor Gully, as far as in doing the, uh, what's necessary on getting the, uh, the list available to us. Um, I agree with, uh, Counselor, uh, Matthews, not only, um, do we have them with open doors, I have several in my district that's really posing a health hazard. Um, I was personally received a phone call and was flagged down by, um, some of the residents here in in District Seven. Um, you know, one, uh, in particular, three houses in particular, kind of located next to one another on Twenty-first Street between, um, is that Arlington and Berkeley Avenue. We have, um, uh, um, houses where the front, the front porches are are caved in, the houses are are falling in, and it poses, um, like I said, a danger and a health hazard to the, um, the, you know, the people in the community, the the neighbors, not only, you know, um, those dwellings, but through throughout the district. So again, if, you know, whatever we could do, whatever you could do as far as in with with your staff, Mayor Gully, we would greatly appreciate, um, you know, these properties being identified, the, excuse me, identified and moving expeditiously on, um, demolishing them. Thank you all so much.
Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am.
I want to say the same thing, like, we have a lot in District Two. A lot of structures that need to come down, and I greatly appreciate the mayor for for giving us this list. Thank you, Mayor Gully.
I think all of us have many houses in our districts that need to be demolished. But, uh, we must remember the funds that we place there. If we want more houses to be demolished, we need to find creative ways of, um, placing more funds there so we can go ahead and get these houses down. Not only are they being used as, um, hotels, they're being used for the drug trafficking community. I I must say that as much as I hate you, but I must say it. For the drug trafficking communities, and we have one or two realtors here in the city of Bessemer who owns all of this property, but does not keep this property up. Now, they have it boarded up on on the south side of Bessemer in District Three. It is boarded up, but the It is boarded up, but the doors are open. And they're using these, uh, properties as, um, drug havens. So I would say, counselors, we're, 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 um, we need to, when we get ready to do the, the budget, we need to look at ways of cutting here and there so that we can place funds there so that the mayor can use them to be, uh, used for the demolition list. Thank you so much. Item number ten.
Madam President. Madam President.
Uh.
Madam President.
Mayor Gully, go ahead.
Uh, Madam President, uh, I just wanted to, um, uh, uh, make a point and stuff that currently, uh, each year we put in, uh, uh, as you all know, approximately two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year to tear, um, down, uh, uh, dilapidated structures. But a lot of times, uh, it may not necessarily just be the money. It is, it's the process. It's the process that you have to go through, uh, 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 and, and I guess that's state law in order to tear down some of these, uh, structures. You know, you have to give, uh, the owner of the house, uh, sometimes unfortunate the due process when it comes to that. So the impediment, a lot of times, and not necessarily the amount of money that we, we budgeted and stuff for that, it's just the total process of, of going through, uh, notifying and so the, uh, uh, the, the, the former resident of that property, uh, uh, giving them an opportunity. A lot of times people get into, well, this is the home house, just, you know, they don't want to tap uh, into sentimental type of things. And they appeal it and, and, and the law gives them due process when it comes to a lot of times and, and, and a lot of situations. So a lot of times, you know, it's not necessarily the dollars, uh, uh, it's just the total process of getting houses and stuff torn down.
Thank you, Mayor Gully. Uh, um, Counselor Marshall.
Uh, the, the mayor made my point.
Okay, thank you so much. Item number ten, please.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Are you not hearing? I mean, I'm doing all these, I'm trying to make comments, um.
I don't see you and I, I, I don't hear you, Donna, actually. Um, okay, now I see you, but I don't hear you. I don't hear you, but now I see.
Hear me now.
I hear you now. Okay.
You made a comment and it spurred my memory. Sometimes it takes a little jiggle there. Uh, you mentioned that they were using them for hotels. And we have a hotel or a motel that everybody talks about and wonders, when are we gonna tear it down? The one on Bessemer Super Highway down from the hospital. I know she came to us a couple of times and was doing work, but I don't see anything going on with that place. And they at least need to tear down the parts that are falling in and damaged. So where are we on that?
Thank you so much. Uh, we'll ask Mr. Harmon and or, uh, Attorney Peyton because if I'm not mistaken, Attorney Thickepin, that hotel has burned since then. The back portion of it has burned since then. So do we know where we are on that hotel, um, Mr. Harmon and or Attorney Peyton?
I would, uh, this is Shan. I, I, I would like to hear from Tom on that one. I know that I, uh, talked to Tom about that, I'm gonna say about a month ago. And I thought I heard him say that they had obtained a permit to tear it down, but I, I'm gonna defer to Tom on that.
Mr. Harmon.
Uh, good morning, Council. Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Shan is correct. Uh, we have heard from a representative of the owner. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, it's a family group that owns this hotel. Uh, they have been interviewing and getting bids from private demolition companies. Uh, thus far, nobody has approached the city about demolition permit or met with an inspector out there. I know that Farmer Shabran met with the representative of the owner, what I said, the owner's attorney, and contractors. It's been probably six weeks, two months ago. I'm fuzzy on the timeframe, but there have been talks to this effect. We're trying to encourage it to move in that general direction. This complex is large. It covers a couple acres. It's got multiple buildings on it. You're easily looking into six figures to demolish this. Uh, I think we'd rather not have that, that, that financial burden fall on the city. Especially since the owners of the property get into such dilapidated condition as is, it's their responsibility to clean that up. So we're, we're encouraging, we're trying to work with them and encouraging the private demolition of that, that keeping the city out of it. Hope that answers the, the question on it.
Well, that sounds good to me, but I do, um, please keep us upda- updated on where we are with that so that we'll know, uh, what's going on with that property because it's been long overdue. Long overdue.
I, I think, I just.
Yes, ma'am. I agree. When they make, uh, contact with the city, we'll.
Thank you so much. Um, Counselor Thickepin, did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, it did. I just kind of wanted to know where we stood on it and whether they were doing anything. I think Counselor Matthews had a comment.
He does. Counselor Matthews.
I just think we're too soft. That, that building will be there next year this time. We'd be saying the same thing next year. That's all.
No, no, I don't think we're gonna be saying the same thing next year with that building.
All right.
To Counselor Matthews. Thank you so much.
Counselor President.
Item number ten, Ms. Taylor.
Item ten, status on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit of the city finances.
Mayor Gully.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I, I, uh, I have Ms. Pryor, uh, finance director on the line and stuff, and she should be able to give you an update on where we are relevant and stuff to that. Ms. Pryor, you on the line? Uh, if you'll give us an update right now.
Ms. Pryor, are you on the line? We'll come back to Ms. Pryor. Item number eleven, please.
Status on the balance of gas tax.
Mayor Gully.
Uh, that's a line item, uh, uh, as well, uh, that, um, Ms. Pryor can give us an update and stuff on, uh, uh. I can get you and some of that information on the balance in that account, but I also like, want to, um, make note of the fact that, uh, as a council body, you all have already voted. And so the earmark and so that money is up to some projects and stuff as well. So just, um, uh, as she give you that balance, just recognize that is, uh, is a balance that was in the account right now. But, um, I guess a great deal of it has already been earmarked and such a certain project that we have going on in and around the city.
Counselors, you've heard, um, Mayor Gully. And we are waiting on the balance from Ms. Pryor. Item number ten and eleven.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I haven't gone, I haven't gone any place yet, counsel.
Look, uh, about that, thank you, Madam Chair. About that gas tax and the project that's going on, it'll, it, I think it'll be fruitful if, if, if the project is noted as well. Cause I, I just heard the mayor say, uh, we, we'll get that balance, but you know, that money's been earmarked. And I think what we need to do is have a, a, a column or a sheet of earmark. Then we could subtract it from whatever we get. Then we'll know what we have in gas tax.
Well, we'll just ask Ms., uh, Pryor to do a spreadsheet. And on that spreadsheet, she'll have the projects that's in, um, that we're doing now and the amount that comes out of the bo- the bottom line there for the gas tax. And that should, each item should give us the balance of what is, uh, in that account. Counselors, is there any concern and or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Um, as far as in, um, wanting to know the, uh, the status of the gas tax, um, you know, with that being a major concern in mo- in multiple districts, I know in District Seven as far as enroll paving. Um, you know, you know, that's what I was told as far as with the gas taxes. That, you know, that's what the, um, the funds would be utilized as far as in, um, the paving of, of the different streets. So, um, you'll getting to know, we're having an opportunity to know what the balance is. Um, it kind of, you know, uh, is half the battle on, um, putting us in a better position of getting some of these roads paved in our district or, uh, a- and or being able to, um, enlighten the citizens who want to know and update or who are requesting, um, the, um, the paving of, of different streets. So, um, by knowing the balance, I think that'll, you know, put us as counselors in a better position to, um, kind of better the condition with, within, within our districts. So, um, thank you and I look forward to that information.
Thank you very much. We're waiting on Ms. Pryor. Is she on the line? Item number twelve, please.
Discussion on the Downtown Redevelopment Authority.
I think that was, um, uh, Counselor Marshall.
Uh, yes, Madam President, um, I did in- include that. Um, but I'll let, um, Attorney Peyton kind of bring us up to speed on that.
Attorney Peyton.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Counselor Marshall asked me to go through kind of a history on that board and, you know, let you know what, what, what is that board? What, what, what is its purpose? How many members?
Yeah.
What can it be used for?
Mayor Gully, mute yourself. Mute yourself.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Attorney Peyton.
So, the Downtown Redevelopment Authority was established, I'm gonna say back in the early nineties. I don't have the certificate of incorporation in front of us, but it's, uh, these authorities are authorized by state law. It's eleven fifty-four A one. That's the chapter on it, if you want to take a look at it. And they are a, an authority comprised of three members. Uh, the three members have to be qualified electors of the city, uh, of Bessemer. City councilors can sit on that board. There's no, with Industrial Development Board, there's a prohibition against the city councilor sitting on the board, but not so with an industrial development, I mean, not industrial development authority, a downtown redevelopment authority. And so if the city establishes what's called a central business district and these entities are allowed to function and do a lot of things, uh, that a municipality can't do. Uh, I'm gonna give you a couple of examples of things that they've done in the past. Um, so it's a company called Industrial Maintenance. And they were given a twenty thousand dollar loan, uh, back in two thousand and seven to do some work. They were located downtown. Uh, they've paid that loan back to the, to the Downtown Redevelopment Authority. Uh, uh, United Textals, uh, the McDonald's received a sixty thousand dollar loan from that entity. And it looks like that was back in nineteen ninety-seven. And that one has been satisfied. I believe there may be one, uh, loan that's still active. And that is, uh, I think the, the Terry Law Firm, when they redid the building there on Third Avenue, that historic building there on, uh, Third Avenue at, I was actually to the courthouse. Uh, I think that was a twenty thousand dollar loan. I wasn't involved in that, but those are the kind of things that, that they're, uh, able to do to assist in the redevelopment of downtown. They can do projects as far away as three miles from the central business district, but they don't, you don't have the same tax advantages and you can't do as many projects as you can downtown. Um, the, for all practical purposes, I don't think that board has done anything in, in years. Um, I know, um, about the only thing they've done is, is si- execute satisfactions of mortgages that have been paid, but, um, and they haven't been reappointed in quite, in quite some time. I know Ms. Belcher is on that, uh, authority. And, uh, I think Ms. Thomas is on there, but I can't recall. But, uh, it needs to be updated and, uh, a new board there. I, I recall, I'd have to find out Frank Holmes keeps the books on that, but I think there's some money in there. I think there's about two hundred and forty thousand dollars that could be used to assist in the redevelopment of downtown.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to add, as you may remember, we did, uh, do an advertisement for individuals wishing to serve on that board and we received one resume. And I'd like for us to, um, to consider that resume. Um, it's not in our pack. Um, so hopefully we can have that in our pack that comes out this week so that we might consider that. And I, and the reason I was interested in that redevelopment authority is that, you know, we're doing work with Strada now in terms of visioning and some things for the city. So I thought it was, um, may- maybe very beneficial to us to also have this authority in place that could probably work along or kind of dovetail their activities along with Strada. So I'd like, um, for us to have that, uh, resume in the pack and, um, and, and possibly have a resolution to go and appoint the, um, the, the one person. And then as Attorney Peyton said, um, uh, we'd give consideration to maybe someone from the council also serving um, on, on that, um, authority. Thank you.
If that is what this council desires, are there any, one moment, Counselor Matthews, is there any questions and or concerns? Mr. Matthews.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, in conju- I didn't, uh, we, do we have an active, uh, list of the persons that's now on there?
Yes, sir, we do. I had that sent to you all.
Well, when did you send it?
It was some weeks ago, but yes, I had that sent to you all. That's how I know. The same time you and I, um, told Angela to put it on, um, the one, there was one person that has moved out of town. And you're absolutely right. There are two on there that, um, need to be replaced. Uh, so we're actually looking for three replacements instead of one.
Yeah, that, that's.
And I'll have her to send those to you again, but yes, I had her to send those to you, um, maybe about a month ago. You all should have gotten them.
Okay, and, and, uh, in conjunction with the whole downtown, I think there's a, a conglomerate of things need to be looked at, uh, downtown redevelopment, historic preservation, uh, marketing. It, it needs to be, and, and I would say sometime I think we kind of get overloaded. And, you know, just little bits and pieces of things. If we would have a meeting that could be exclusive for whatever, whatever topic that we're talking on, then I think we could gain more traction rather than, you know, saying something about it in two minute intervals. Uh, but I think it's, it's several things would be to our advantage to, uh, to discuss when it comes to the downtown. I mean, and I like, you know, rea- you know, getting the Downtown Redevelopment Authority back active, but there's many components in, uh, revitalizing the downtown. So that's why I made that statement. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Matthews, um, for, for your comments on that. And you're absolutely right, a lot to be done downtown. Um, and that was one reason why I was interested in us trying to get this board reactivated so that we could get some activity stirring and, um, possibly move forward on, on some items. Uh, again, I, I'd like for that resume of that person who, uh, submitted the resume to be in our packs this week. And, um, hopefully we could at least go on and, um, appoint that person, uh, if this council desires and, um, and work on, um, you know, get, getting the, um, getting some, somebody from the council even to serve on that and that would at least establish a quorum, even if we had to go out and look for one other person, uh, to serve on the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselors, we, it is, it is now a ten, ten eleven and we've gone overtime. If it's okay with the, with the body. Ms. Pryor. Um, can you give that? One moment, Counselor Hallen. Ms. Pryor, can you give that update in the council meeting, please? And counselors, can you do your, um, can you do your, um, comments in the next meeting, please?
Ma- Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to be sure that we come to a conclusion, uh, in terms of hopefully next week, uh, taking some action on the resume that we received.
Yes, sir. It is duly noted, Counselor Marshall. It is noted. And I have no problems with that, counselors. That is up to this body.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Collier.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to say I'll serve on that board, the downtown community.
That is totally up to this body, whom that chooses to serve on that board, Counselor Collier. But thank you for your recommendation, Counselor Crusoe. Counselor Crusoe.
Yes, ma'am. My, I can discuss it in council meeting, that'll be fine.
You can discuss it on your District one through seven, is that okay?
I will, I will.
Thank you so much. Item number eleven, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know, if someone wanted to submit for that, do they submit it to the clerk's office?
Yes, ma'am.
For the board? Thank you.
But it has already, it has already, Counselor.
Been closed, okay.
It has already been closed. That will be up to this body. And when I say up to this body, it will be up to the counselors. Since we don't have, I think, I think I saw three, and two of them came in the day after. But we have one that came in on time. That will be a process for this body to suggest whether or not we use those people or whom we want to put on that downtown redevelopment board.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eleven, please.
Item eleven, status on the balance of gas tax?
No, ma'am. Item number eleven.
Eleven.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm looking at two different things. Item number thirteen, please.
Item thirteen is requesting status of demolition on the following properties in District six.
Counselor Matthews, if at all possible, can we take that up in council meeting?
Take it up where?
In council meeting.
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay, thank you so much.
That'll be that next year, too.
And item number fourteen, we'll take those up in council meeting. Attorney Harris. Attorney Harris.
I'm here. Yes, Counselor.
Are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. I can hear you now. This has been a wonderful year for me. I've enjoyed being your city counselor. My hair is just a tad bit gray, but I have enjoyed working with each of you. Attorney Harris, do we need to call this meeting to order and do roll call and then elections? Or do I need to turn it over to the city clerk at this time?
Then we need to call it to order and turn election over to the city clerk.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Can I call roll, please?
Thank you, ma'am. Please call roll.
Counselor Alexander.
Present.
Counselor Collier.
Present.
Counselor Marshall.
Present.
Counselor Matthews.
Present.
Counselor Thickpan.
Present.
Counselor Crusoe. Counselor Crusoe.
Present.
Counselor Donald.
Present.
There are seven present, no absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Do I just turn this over to you, city clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item three would be the election of officers. The floor is open for nominations for council president.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Counselor Collier.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to nominate Councilman Matthews. I mean, clerk, I would like to nominate Councilman Matthews for president.
Yes, sir. Any other nominations?
Madam Chair. I meant Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I can see.
I would like to nominate Council Donald for president.
Okay, Counselor Donald, are there any other nominations?
Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Counselor Marshall.
I move that we close the nominations.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Marshall moved to close, and Counselor Crusoe second motion. We have a nomination for Counselor Matthews, a nomination for Counselor Donald. And I'm going to call roll, and when I call your name, please state which person you are going to choose for council president. Counselor Alexander.
Counselor Donald.
Counselor Collier.
Matthews.
Counselor Marshall.
Matthews.
Counselor Matthews.
Counselor Donald.
Counselor Thickpan.
Matthews.
Counselor Crusoe.
Counselor Donald.
Counselor Donald.
Donald.
Yeah, one, two, three. Four votes for Counselor Donald and three votes for Counselor Matthews. Counselor Donald has been, has the majority of the votes, and she is president of the council. I turn it over to you, Counselor Donald.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so, thank you so much, counselors, for your vote of confidence. Item number two is the election of council president pro temp.
Madam Chair.
Chair.
I think Marshall was first.
I was first.
Okay.
Go ahead, I yield.
Thank you.
I nominate Counselor Matthews.
Madam Chair, I nominate Counselor Thickpan.
Did I hear another nomination?
Madam Chair, I would like to close the nominations.
It has been, it has been, I need a second, please. Need a second.
Second.
That's properly moved to close the nominations of Councilor Pro Temp. City clerk?
Yes, ma'am. When I call your name, choose the person you want for Council Pro Temp. Counselor Alexander.
Counselor Matthews.
Counselor Collier.
Thickpan.
Counselor Marshall.
Thickpan.
Counselor Matthews.
Matthews.
Counselor Thickpan.
Thickpan.
Counselor Crusoe.
Counselor Marshall, excuse me, Counselor Matthews, excuse me.
Counselor Donald.
Matthews.
We have four votes for Counselor Matthews, three votes for Counselor Thickpan. Counselor Matthews has been elected president pro temp.
Thank you so much. Is there anything you'd like to say, President Pro Temp Matthews?
Thank you, that's all.
Item number four, please.
Approval of minutes from October twenty, twenty twenty.
Counselor, you see your minutes on your packet. Are there any questions and/or concerns? If not, I need a motion and a second, please. Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor Crusoe.
I move that we approve the minutes from the council on October twentieth.
Second.
Has been motioned and seconded that we approved the minutes from October the second, two thousand twenty. Ms. Taylor, roll call, please.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Collier. Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews. Counselor Thickpan.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Item number five, please.
Committee reports.
Counselor, are there any committee reports? Item number six, please.
Presentations, awards, announcements, and recognitions.
Mayor Gully.
Madam President, first, I want to congratulate you, as well as Counselor Matthews.
Thank you, sir.
For your election to president and pro temp respectively. And I'd ask them so a courtesy and so to yield my time and so to Ms. Pryor and Mr. Eugene Pitts at this time.
Yes, sir. Ms. Pryor.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I apologize, I was unmuted on my end, but obviously, you all could not hear me, so I had to switch my location. So we are substantially complete with our work for the audit, so we are ready to begin our audit for fiscal year twenty nineteen. We do have a couple more things. We're waiting on the Birmingham, and I'm sorry, we're waiting on the Bessemer Airport Authority to complete their books. So once we get that, I think that is the last thing that we are waiting on, and we can turn everything over to our auditor, Mr. Pitts. And I'm gonna just let him speak because he'll be able to tell you about his processes, what he has to do with his work, but we are substantially complete and we're ready for the audit to take place.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Pitts?
Good afternoon, I'm Eugene Pitts with the Principal of Associates. Congratulations, Council President at Pro Temp. The audit itself, we are ready to get started on it. They've got substantial work done, but we haven't looked at anything. The audit will take about five hundred and forty hours. That's roughly three months, but we'll be finished faster than that because we'll be working more than eight-hour days. So we're happy to be here, be on board. We're going to meet the objectives that the council has, is to get this wrapped up. It's over a year and a half to hand, you know, already. So no other time needs to be wasted, and trust me, it'll be ready. Let me tell you, it's going to be ready. Thank you.
Can we look for that audit this year?
I have to just leave in terms of time, have a constraint within the five hundred and forty hours and three months. That way, we'll have realistic adjustments and time to do what we need to do, and that'll be more realistic for you to look at it for it to be completed. But the goal is to have it completed before the end.
Before then. Counselors, you've heard Mr. Pitts and Ms. Pryor. Are there any questions and/or concerns?
No questions, but just a comment. Looking forward, thank you, Mr. Pitts, and looking forward to you and your time constraints, and hopefully, you can produce that within the five hundred and forty-hour timeline that you just gave. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very kindly.
Thank you so much. Mayor, is there anything that you wanted to say?
Oh, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Pryor.
You're welcome. Would you like to report as well on the gas taxes?
Please, please.
Yes, ma'am. So we have four gas tax accounts. We have a seven cent gas tax. I'll just give you the total first, if it's okay. So the total of the gas tax account is one million thirty thousand dollars. And then I'll go ahead and break that down for you. We have about twenty-six percent coming in right now for gas taxes. We have a seven cent gas tax. The balance is three hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. We have a one cent gas tax, which is one hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars and forty-seven cents. We also have the four and five cent gas tax coming in, which is three hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Okay, and the last one that we have, this is the new one, which started in twenty nineteen. It's the Rebuild Alabama Gas Tax. And it's scheduled to be, well, the balance of it is one hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-five cents. Okay, so it's a graduated, this Rebuild Alabama Gas Tax is a graduated sales tax. It's slated to be ten percent. It started in twenty nineteen with six percent. Right now, it's at eight percent, and the next year, it will be ten percent. So it's a graduated sales tax. Right now, we're collecting eight, it's eight percent right now.
Thank you so much. We discussed doing a spreadsheet to give us the information that we needed on the projects that we've already, this money is already going to versus what the balance is. If you'll get that to us, at least by the first meeting in December.
Yes, ma'am, and I work with engineers on that because they would actually have the detail on the projects. I wouldn't have that type of effort, all that information. They would be the best ones to provide the actual detail on which process, which projects are in, you know, in process right now.
Okay, that's E E F S?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we would ask the mayor to, please ask that E E F S would get with you and that all of that information will be provided to the council on a spreadsheet, if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for your time. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, yes, sir. I can't hear you, ma'am. Okay.
I've already spoken to E E F S and they'll be working on that spreadsheet and so to get to you all. But I did want us to also, as we get to a particular point, well, we're working and completing that audit, as you all know, and as we have discussed, in going to refine, you know, refund bonds. I think, as it stands now, we have somewhere in between the three, the four million dollar savings on those bonds. I would appreciate if we all sit down and take a look at some kind of monies that we can look at to do some paving at that particular time. Now, that Rebuild Alabama is a new gas tax. I would kind of suggest and stuff that we look at borrowing and stuff some money to do that and allowing some of that new tax to repay that particular bond as we move forward. So that will be something that I definitely hope that we can take a look at and we can address some of the paving issues that we have in the city.
Yes, sir, thank you. Look at your calendar, Mayor Gully. We want to look at that as quickly as possible because we got some terrible streets here in the city. Look at your calendar, Mayor Gully, and if you would send us some dates, that's good to sit down, I'll give them to the council, and we'll sit down and see what date is best for all of us to discuss that issue. Counselor Matthews?
Yeah, I'd like to concur and piggyback what the mayor just said about the Rebuild Alabama and utilize that monies for a payment on an issue with some bonds so we can address on a larger scale than what we have been doing, address some of the dire need, the street paving. I think I've been advocate of that for quite some time. So I think that's something that we need to really focus on and just jump right in it, all us together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The question is to the mayor, how long will this Rebuild Alabama tax be in force?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Matthews, I mean, Counselor Marshall, it's an indefinite tax. Now, I think as Ms. Pryor said earlier, I think it went up four percent, and then it goes up six percent, and I think it may go up to ten percent, ten percent going forward. But it is a continual tax. Ten percent going forward, uh, but, uh, it is a, uh, it's a continual tax, and so that will not go away. So, uh, it, it would probably be a very, very good way to, um, uh, uh, to re, you know, refund the payment and stuff of those bonds, whatever, uh, we so choose.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And, and Madam, and Madam Chair, one, one last comment, please.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have that, I get that information, uh, Counsel Marshall,
No.
Uh, to you concerning that, that, uh, that Rebuild Alabama, and it is, you know, we have, have a version of it that you can, uh, I get everybody a copy of it, okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I like that Rebuild Alabama because it's a graduated tax. Um, that's one of the reasons, uh, when I read it, I, I like Rebuild, uh, Alabama. Um, thank you, um, Ms. Pryor, Mr. Pitts, and Mayor Gully. Uh, Counselor Matthews, I, I understand that you have to leave your items that was on planning session, do you want to discuss them now?
I had myself muted. It, it was just the, uh, that the, the, what was in your bag, those homes, I, I, I've gotten some calls again about the one on Sixteenth Street that has the open septic tank, and which all of them are collapsing, and, uh, I know we, we're supposed, supposed to be getting a list, uh, from the building department concerning demolition, and I did get a, uh, update from Mr. Norris concerning, uh, nineteen, well, nineteen oh six, and I can only go by what's on the, up over the door. It had nineteen oh four on there, but I can be corrected, you know, I don't know. That's something that the Wickersons, that was the old Wickerson house, but, uh, these homes are, uh, are dangerous, uh, in, in, in caving in, and I think that, uh, and we have one behind, uh, a classic burglar fifteen street, it's on Long Fourteenth Street, the door is wide open, people are going in and out of it, so it's just some, some, it's need, need some legwork and some, uh, some initiatives to take care of these, these, uh, unboarded houses, and I don't think the state prohibits us from forcing, and attorney, you might, you all may can correct me, do they have, uh, some type of law that would prohibit us from enforcing the homeowners to board these homes up? Attorneys? Y'all had to speak at the same time.
Hey, this is Shan, um, no, I mean, of course, it's something that would keep us from, from making them enforce it. Problem with a lot of these is whether you can find the owners, if they're, you know, if these are air property, you know, who, who do you, who do you find to make them do it? You know, is, is one, is one question.
Well, I, I don't know, that's, that, that's above my pay grade, uh, so.
So, so just, just short, let me, you know, all the state law requires is that you go to the tax assessor's office, pull the name off the tax assessor's roll, and use that. The problem is, is that there was a middle district, federal district, uh, middle district court decision by Judge Thompson. And, and he ruled that in this day and age, that the state law is not sufficient to grant due process to people that, that since you can go online and look and find owners and, and do title searches and those things, that you have to, you have to do a title search and, and make a valid effort to find people, uh, in order to afford them due process, so it's,
Yeah.
it's not as easy as it was probably twenty years ago.
Yeah, yeah, probably not, and, 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 and I, I know there's a process, we can process the, uh, the demolition part, but these, that, that, uh, that's a nuisance where people are going in, doing whatever they like, and then for some unknown reason, someone get in a mental, have a mental problem, and they go in there and nobody ever finds them. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's, at some point, you know, we're gonna have to fish or cut bait, you know? Let's, let's, let's board these, let's make the, let's put an effort to find the owners, to, uh, ask them to board these homes up, uh, we need to pass an ordinance, or whatever we need to do, I mean, we just need to do something, so it's just looking bad.
Yes.
In our community.
Yes, right, I, I don't disagree, and maybe we can look more at, in some of these, if they're in that bad a condition, or I know they're all bad, but maybe we can look at, see if we can do it on an emergency basis, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I got a guy on hospice living right next to one that's falling in, and an open septic tank in the backyard, and his family is, is, uh, jumping on me, I'm gonna let him jump on y'all. I'll jump on all of them.
All right.
But anyway, that's, that's my, that's my, uh, that's my plea for now, and the, the rest of them, I'll, uh, I'll forward them to the, uh, mayor's office. And, uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask that, uh, we pray for the McLean family, uh, former State Senator E.B. McLean, uh, passed away on last evening. And, uh, we'd like for you to consider his, his family in, in our prayers at this time, okay?
Thank you so much, um.
Thank you.
Counselor Matthews?
I'm Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Counselor.
A suggestion, if you don't mind, I'm not really certain whether we're gonna entertain this today or not. Um, are we nominating the chick, um, signers today, or is that another time, before, uh, Counselor Matthew leaves?
Um, Counselor Crusoe, that is totally up to, uh, this body. Uh, that's not a one person's statement. Whenever the city, um, city council, whether it be today, tomorrow, next year, that is totally up to the body. Whether or not they want to, um, want to change chick signers, that's up to the body.
No prob, I know it was, I think it was done the same time that we did the nominations for President, uh, and Pro Tem the last time, and I was just wa- wondering whether it was, um, if, um, gonna be done today or not. Nevertheless, I mean, thank you.
That's totally up to the body, if there's a nomination on the table to do that, we'll carry the nomination through, but that's totally up to this body.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, I'm Madam President.
You're welcome. Um, Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Item number seven, please.
Status on AMIT.
Um, Counselors, I put that on, and that was, um, to see who, whether or not the council has the authority to change the agent's insurance agent. Uh, there is some research that has been done, and I try to keep the counselors in the loop with everything that is going on. Um, Attorney Harris, are you on the line? Attorney Harris, are you on the line?
Can you hear me?
I can now, can everyone here, Attorney Harris? Okay, and with that being said, I think I said my, um, my first term as president, I think I said there are some ordinances that we need to revisit here in the city of Bessemer. And there are some ordinances, um, we need to sit and have a meeting in the near future, before the end of the year, uh, here in the city of Bessemer, to update some of these, um, these ordinances from nineteen seventy-five, nineteen seventy-three. They've changed, and so have the city, and as the city grows, I hope that our ordinances and our legislative body will, um, do the same. Attorney Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Status on AMIT, please.
Well, there has been some research, at, at your request, I have researched, uh, one issue in particular, and, and it is, uh, who, uh, uh, appoints the, the agent, uh, for that, uh, that's between the city and, and, uh, AMIT. And, and my research, there, there's nothing on the books that, 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 that says, uh, right off how that's done, but the, look at the city, the, the way the code is laid out, your, 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 uh, that, that code that applies to the city of Bessemer. Uh, it does provide that the mayor, so mayor appoints the, the, uh, all officers and employees of the city. Uh, but I believe, when we look at it, I don't believe that, uh, agent, an agent falls within, uh, that category, and it appears to me then that, 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 uh, because the city council does approve all contracts, et cetera, with, with, uh, people that are working for the city, that, that falls, I believe it probably falls with on, on the city council. I did contact, uh, just to see what they thought about it. I contacted, uh, the lawyers up at the Alabama League of Municipalities, and, uh, I was advised that, that was their opinion as well, that was nothing that, that, that was to the contrary to that.
Counselors, you heard, um, Attorney Harris, are there any questions and or concerns?
Madam President.
Madam Chair. Go ahead, Counselor, um.
That's all right, Counselor, call you.
Uh, Attorney Harris.
Yes, sir.
You said, this is just an opinion of yours, right, an opinion of yours?
My opinion, yes.
Okay, okay, I was just, okay, I was just trying to.
And my opinion, yes, my opinion, yeah.
Counselor Alexander?
Madam Chair, I was gonna ask this body, um, can the committee get together, um, and meet again, and then come back with some recommendations?
Yes, ma'am, uh, you're, the committee, if you all will meet and bring, and that would, would, that would, would have been my next, uh, my next, uh, stop, Counselor Alexander, that the committee gets together and bring this body back a recommendation on, uh, the first meeting in December, please.
Madam President, this is Shan, I, and I had thought that Greg and I were gonna discuss this matter, but, uh, it seems how that, that didn't happen. Um, I do not think it is clear that the council has that authority. Um, it looks to me, my opinion would be that the mayor has that authority, although it is specifically, I would agree that it's specifically not stated that the mayor has the authority to appoint an insurance agent. The, the laws is certainly clear that the council doesn't have that authority either. Um, the city of Bessemer statute, and a lot of cities that have a city council form of government, the city council appoints clerk, treasurer, other offices within the city, but in the city of Bessemer, the mayor is the appointing authority. And I think that, based on eleven forty-three eighty-one, that the affairs of the city are under control of the mayor, eleven forty-three D fourteen, uh, that the mayor appoints all officers and employees. I think those, those two are, are grounds to continue having the mayor appoint the agent. Third, the mayor has appointed the agent, gosh, since, uh, uh, ad infinitum, going back to, um, Mayor Porter, Mitchell, May, and even continuing with this mayor. I think there's a precedent that has been set in this city for that action. Uh, finally, uh, the contract, if, if, this is going to be based on contract law, is what I heard Mr. Harris allude to. The contract for the insurance is based on three year terms. You receive a discounted premium because you have a three year term. That term started January eighth of nineteen. So, that would run through until January seventh of twenty-two. The next time that a new contract would be entered into would be in January of twenty-two. So, even if it's on a contract basis, uh, I think arguments can be made that, uh, the agency has been selected on, on that basis also. Thank you.
Well, you're absolutely right, and I didn't expect one to be, um, selected this year, because I do know that it's on a three year term. But, um, in that due time, we can, since we have questions about it, I would think we could work on that, the mayor and the two attorneys, along with, uh, that committee could work on that, and let us get some clarity on that, we can work together, sometimes we can disagree to agree, and sometimes we can disagree not to agree, but whatever it is, let us, uh, work together with that committee, and let us come up with a, um, a solution to this, because from what I'm told, and I've, I've, I've called several, I've done my own research, is that, um, we were, um, their words were misconstrued, and that's not what was said. So, with that being said, let the mayor, the two attorneys, and this committee work together and bring this body back a solution, please.
I'm Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just, um, would like to speak to, um, as far as the comment that Attorney May, Attorney Peyton made concerning, um, the presidents. Um, given that, um, this appointment being made under previous mayors, um, you know, let's also keep in mind, due to, um, previous performance, that still does, um, um, set, um, you'll, um, a- as far as the, the rules or, or regulations, so let, let's keep that in mind, just because something has been done a certain way, um, for, um, some, a certain period of time, if, um, you, you, I mean, if, 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 if it's, if it's not legal, or if it, I mean, if, if, um, that authority lies elsewhere, let's, um, you know, do the necessary, um, work and steps as far as in putting all the, the authority in, in, in the hands of the right people. So, I look forward to, um, that information being brought back to us.
Madam President.
Yes, sir, um, Mayor Gully.
I agree, and so if, uh, the appointment itself is clear, uh, i- if it has been appointed itself by the mayor, uh, in, in, in past administrations, um, uh, even, e- even your council representative, uh, was, uh, the attorney for the previous, uh, uh, mayor administration, uh, for the, for the previous council, uh, I find it strange that he finds that, uh, it is the, it's not the mayor's appointment, uh, in prior to two thousand and ten, when he served, uh, in that capacity, uh, uh, with the same council, uh, with a different council, uh, uh, his opinion changed, uh, from, uh, from council to council, uh, depending on the administration, so I do think, and I look forward to, uh, all of us sitting down and coming up and so with, uh, 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 a decision, uh, one way or, or the other, uh, so to clarify and so this, and I support that.
You're absolutely right, Mayor Gully, I'm for open conver- conversation when it comes to, uh, disagreements. Instead of screaming at each other, I'm for open conversation. Uh, Attorney Harris, do you have anything to say to? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, with all due respect, in, in, in Attorney Harris's, uh, defense, uh, some time ago, when, uh, Moton Allen and Williams was, uh, appointed or agreed upon, I would use the word, uh, because some councils agreed and some didn't. Uh, Attorney Harris at that time said he thought it was the council's call, but it never, it, it never materialized to, to go any further. I will say that, if he don't say it, I'll say that, uh, I remember it. You know, and it may be in some minutes or something, but I ain't looking to dig into that, but I do remember that particular incident when, uh, former Mayor May raised the question and, uh, wanted to appoint and appointed, uh, Moton Allen and Williams. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Again, Attorney Harris, are you on the line?
I am, Counsel, go ahead. I'm hearing intermittently, but apparently you all can hear me, so go ahead, but I'm just hearing some of you guys intermittently. Go ahead.
Yes, um.
Go ahead.
In the past, have you said that it was not the council's appointment?
No, I haven't, I don't recall saying, ever, ever having a contrary opinion to that.
Thank you, sir. We will look forward to that committee, the mayor and both attorneys, getting together and bringing a resolution back, uh, solution, I'm sorry, back to this body. Thank you so much. Item number eight, Ms. Taylor?
Item eight is a.
Item eight is a status on CDBG quarterly report.
Uh, counselors, I received, um, information from CDBG on yesterday from Mr. Terrain Norris, um, via the mayor's office. I will in turn get that information out to you and we'll discuss that in our December, um, planning session, please. Ms. Hall, are you on the line? I do apologize. Are you on the line?
Good morning, I am.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm willing, yourself, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, item number nine, please.
Granted extensions list attached.
Ms. Hall.
On this particular item, eight oh seven Lewis Avenue was granted an extension and the property has been cut out by the owner, therefore I would like to request that it be abated.
Madam, I need to.
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved in second. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Collier. Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Matthews. Uh, he's left. Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you so much. Um, item number ten, please.
Request abatement of properties, list attached.
Counselors, you have that, that list should have been sent to you. Are there any questions and or concerns? If not, I need a motion and a second, please.
Madam President, I move to abate the properties.
I need a second, please.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier. Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thicke Pan. Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Hall, let me thank you for all that you do. I know a lot of times you don't uh, feel appreciated, but do know that we appreciate everything that you do. When I run into you, Ryan, it makes my heart feel good to know that I'm not the only one that's riding Paul Hill or that's riding Sloane. See all of this, all this going on in our districts. Thank you so much because I see that, um, Paul Hill has actually been cut. And thank you for all that you do for all of us.
Thank you, Your Honor, you're welcome.
Item number eleven, please.
E E F S invoices for the month of August twenty twenty in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred, sixty-four dollars and one cent.
Counselors, you saw it, the invoices. Are there any questions and or concerns? If not, I need a motion and a second, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, I move the resolution.
Need a second, please. It's been properly moved and second, that we accept E E F S invoices for the month of August twenty twenty in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred, sixty-four dollars and one cent. I need a vote, please. Uh, need roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Uh.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Item number twelve, please.
A resolution requiring that the expenditure of funds provided to the city of Bessemer through the CDBG program be presented to and approved by the city council of the city of Bessemer.
Counselors, I placed that on there. I received, uh, received a letter from Washington, uh, several days ago. I have not had an opportunity to get it out to you all, but I'll get it out to you all on today. I asked that we table this until the planning session is in December with the rest of the, uh, CDBG program information. That a way we will understand it better. I asked, uh, this body to table this until December planning session. Item number thirteen, please.
Resolution authorized the payment of invoice for Jackson Harris P.C. for the month of June twenty twenty.
Attorneys, let me ask a question, please. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, can we do all of these? Do we have, do we have invoices for these? Attorney Harris.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me, Madam President?
I can, I can now.
Yes, Madam President. Though these, I have completed these invoices, but going back, looking over them, I saw some errors. Uh, probably came in dict, and from dictation, uh, but instead of sending them, I think I need to look them over all before. I don't want to come with any errors in them. So if you, I'll, I will have them on the next agenda. I just didn't send them because I did see something that was not correct. So I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna put them on the agenda.
Thank you so much. So thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen will be on the agenda next week?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is that?
Madam President.
Um. Yes, sir.
I can interrupt you, and I don't know if Mr. Harris had the opportunity to speak with you. I, I do need to, uh, request the council go into executive session for about ten minutes to discuss a matter of litigation, um, and, and the resolution of that at, at some point.
Um, is it possible we can go into executive session? Um, well, since we, we don't have the, uh, in, I tend, the invoices for Jackson Harris P.C., um, the only thing left is comments, uh, from district one through seven. Counselors, do you want to go ahead and go into executive session or do you want to do your, uh, comments and then go in executive session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like to, uh, go ahead and entertain the council's, um, comments and, um, and statements, and then we can go into executive session and then come back and, and adjourn.
That sounds good to me.
Thank you, sir. Uh, item number seventeen, Ms. Taylor.
Council members' comments, statements, or motions.
District number one.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, one thing, uh, Madam President, uh.
Yes, sir.
Trying to see when the Renters Committee is gonna meet. That's one.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the second thing is, I think it's, uh, important to what we discussed today on demolition, that, uh, portions of that Renters Committee, that we meet as soon as possible. And that's all. I forward everything else to the mayor's office.
Thank you, sir. Item number, um, I'm sorry, district number two.
I'll forward to the mayor's office.
Thank you. District number four.
I'll continue to forward mine to the mayor's office.
Thank you. Five.
Uh, continue forward to the mayor.
Six has left a meeting. Seven.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, um, for district seven, uh, Mayor Gully, I've received several, um, phone calls, you know, um, concerning the, uh, the shootings throughout, um, district seven. Um, if you can speak with, um, staff, um, as far as, uh, Chief Roper or, um, you'll get with him you know, as far as in implementing something to heighten the, uh, the safety of the, um, citizens here in this, um, the, the, uh, the city of Bessemer and namely, um, I know, uh, district seven because, you know, that's where I've got my phone calls from. Um, one in particular down near the Jefferson, um, Avenue. Um, we had a, a, a shooting there and it was several of the residents there who call, um, being concerned even so, so much as the lighting in the area. I had a chance to visit that area, uh, myself, um, along with several other areas. Uh, but we'll stick to this one for the sake of, um, conversation. It, it's, it's extremely dark down there. And one of, um, so- something else that occurred, um, one of the citizens called for Bessemer Utilities, um, to come out there and assess the area requesting more light, even so far as going, um, to, you know, to pay for it personally. While one of the city employees were out there entertaining, um, this idea, um, there were some not-so-kind conversation being held with the, uh, with, with that, um, that, that resident concerning council, um, particularly me. Um, if you don't mind, just for the sake of record, um, and, and also ask that you would afford the protocol, um, to the staff there at, at Bessemer Utilities. Uh, Mayor Gully, when it comes to requesting light, is that decision left up to the council or, um, I mean, as far as in, you know, um, you, or is that, uh, the, the mayor's call?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Crusoe, um, uh, that request should comes, uh, should come to the mayor's office. Uh, there is an, an assessment that we do, uh, when it comes to lighting in an area. Um, and it's every three hundred feet. Uh, uh, we'll be more than, we'd be more than happy to take a look at, uh, what, uh, uh, the area that you're speaking in reference to. Uh, but, uh, we could, we, we can have someone come out, there's a survey done, uh, and, 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 and once they survey the lighting in the area, they could put a light and stuff there. But any, uh, 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 resident can request and so a, 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 a light, uh, put at their resident, uh, for a nominal charge and so, uh, if they so choose.
Yes, sir. I'm on that, and thank you for that clarity because, um, something totally different is being, uh, given to the, the citizens when, when they, when they go out. Thank you so much for that clarity. And, um, the area in particular for this, uh, instance was the Jefferson Avenue, Owings, um, Avenue, Ladder Street and, and Center Street area. I greatly appreciate that. And also, uh, Mayor Gully, can you give me the status, um, um, on the resolution that was, um, presented for, um, Dr. Helen Cooley? You know, I, you know, I brought that information down over a month ago, um, to, to bring up to your office and, and, you know, she was eulogized nearly two months ago, and I haven't gotten, uh, any word back on that. That, you know, and that happens to be district one, but, um, I, I was kind of called into it concerning it. Another thing, um, you know, they're also making application wanting to, um, do an honorary site, um, down in district one. Um, I, you know, I, I would forward that information on to you, um, Counselor Collier, to, um, I, I, I asked him to, to move forward with it, you know, um. It's not, not a problem, not a problem at all, sir. Um, yeah, like I said, um, you know, being that, you know, um, this was a, a pillar in the, in, 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 not just in the, in district one, but in, 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 in the city of Bessemer. And we want to make sure that we properly recognize and acknowledge and also do all we can to, um, reserve, um, um, tho- tho- those memories, um, and attributes that Dr. Helen Cooley offered to the city of Bessemer. Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Gully. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, um, Counselor Crusoe.
Madam President.
Yes, yes, sir. Counselor Collier.
Uh, just to speak to something that Crusoe said. Ms. Crusoe, did you, that was a, a point, did you volunteer for that, right? When you, uh, when you said you would take on that part of, 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 of getting that to the mayor to kind of represent, uh, what, what was done?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on what your, what your question is on to me, um.
Okay.
Did I volunteer what? Did I volunteer what?
What you, what you had just said in your, in your comment. You said.
Concerning Dr. Helen Cooley?
Yes, ma'am.
No, no, sir. Um, you, if you can recall, this information was, um, initially brought before, um, I had a chance to say, um, concerning Dr. Cooley's death by, um, Counselor, uh, Counselor Matthews when, when she first passed. Do you recall that?
I remember Counsel Matthew saying something about it. That's why I remember, that's why I remember.
I, I actually spoke at her funeral. After that point, when, um, Mayor Go- Gully asked as to, um, where, if, if we provided him with the biography or the necessary information for a resolution, um, he would go forth as far as in getting that, get, getting it, um, together. Given that I had the obituary and the biography, I, I, I went down and like I said on, um, in, in, in the council meeting when, um, during the discussion that, that I would provide that information to the mayor's office. So in turn, today, I'm just asking for an update. That, that, that's all, um, Counsel Collier.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't speaking on, I wasn't, I wasn't speaking on the mayor. I was speaking on district, on district one.
Okay, I'm still trying to see what you, what you're saying.
Counselor, Counselor Crusoe, Counselor Crusoe, Counselor Collier, will you all get together after the meeting and discuss this, um, for, um, Dr. Helen Cooley? And bring, um, bring us an update back, please.
I think the update, um, comes from Mayor Gully's office as to because the necessary information has been provided. Um, the update on the status is all, all the, you know, the citizens in, um, you, uh, or, you know, that's been asking for.
Okay, Mayor Gully, is there an update to Counselor Crusoe's request?
Madam President, uh, I'll.
Yes, sir.
I'll look into, uh, the information, um, uh, see where the information is and, um, uh, have to get back and so with you. No, I would not know that right off the top of my head right now.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, district number three, uh, Mayor Gully, um, with all due respect, I would, uh, I, I must let the employees know, we love them and we cares, care dearly about them, but all concerns and cares having to do with the city of Bessemer employment, that is up under Mayor Gully. That does not fall up under the Bessemer City Council. I must let them know. Uh, because we've gotten several complaints and the first thing I asked them, have you called the mayor's office? Because that is who you would call. You wouldn't, um, if it doesn't have to do with a district complaint, if it has anything to do with employment, that would come directly up under Mayor Gully. I don't want them to think that I'm being mean, but I have to, um, give it to them as it is. Employment is directly up under Mayor Gully. And, um, he is approachable. I can say that. He is approachable because I've approached him several times. So you all can approach Mayor Gully and call his office, get an appointment. And you can go down and talk to Mayor Gully about any, uh, incident that you have, that you, um, that you, uh, um, have some discrepancies about. Um, I don't mind listening, but there's nothing that Counselor Donald can do when it has to do, uh, with employment. That's directly up under Mayor Gully. Um, we will continue to send everything to Mayor Gully and, uh, Terrain's office as it stands. We need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Madam President, I move to go into executive session on, uh, the grounds of Attorney Payden's comment.
Need a second?
Second.
Has been properly moved and second, that the city of Bessemer City Council will go into executive session on grounds of, that has been stated by mayor, I'm sorry, by Attorney Harris. Attorney Harris, do you want to do your, uh, disclaimer now or?
I think that would be for, for the city attorney to do it. The, the matters within his, his bailiwick.
Okay, Sha- uh, I'm sorry, Shan. Attorney Shan Payden, you want to do your disclaimer?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the request is for the city council to go into executive session to discuss a matter of threat and litigation. Uh, this is a matter that can, that is under the authority of the council to go into executive session. I am a licensed attorney in the state of Alabama and it's my opinion, uh, as such, and need approximately fifteen minutes.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Taylor.
Counselor Alexander.
Aye.
Counselor Collier.
Aye.
Counselor Marshall.
Aye.
Counselor Thicke Pan.
Aye.
Counselor Crusoe.
Aye.
Counselor Donald.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, the motion carries.
Thank you. You said approximately fifteen minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, will you please? Okay, Mr. Singleton, will you please? Okay, Mr. Singleton, will you please make sure that everyone is off the line, please?
Yes, ma'am. Give me just a second.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Harris, can you, uh, speak so I can identify your device?
My device?
Yes, sir, I have you. Thank you.
Great.
Are we ready, Mr. Singleton?
Give me just a minute, um, Madam President.
Yes, sir.